On the YouTube, they can't hear it all, so. Okay, it is six, six o'clock, we'll have the EDA meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty-fifth meeting? Motion made in second, approve the August twenty-fifth meeting on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Other business?
Yeah, we did, I can't remember if we did it or not, I don't remember. We got another purchase agreement, I don't think we got that one, meaning the one from the teacher?
No, that's a purchase agreement.
Yeah, no, the other lot, we closed on the other one, I think. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually got that.
We just got another purchase agreement for another lot. And then twin home ones, we have it. That's purchase agreement, but nothing else there yet. Any other business? Make a motion to adjourn the EDA? Right in second?
Oh, second.
Motion made in second to adjourn the EDA, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. We'll go right into the council meeting, stamp for pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to the Republic of British France, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? I got a second?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the agenda on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Approve the minutes of the September eighth council meeting. I got a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made, motion's made in second to approve the minutes of the September eighth meeting, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. No business. Oh, the only thing is, is they got their ditch project done down at, yeah, down at the assisted living, that looks nice now. I thought that culvert was gonna be way too high, but the way they got it going through there, it looks great, so. Okay, we'll go to our new business. Carolyn?
Hello again. So, last year, we approached, sorry, of the council to see if we could have a good new Christmas outside because of the COVID restrictions, and we would like to do that this year. Keep it outside and not in the lines, so we're just asking if we can go ahead as we planned last year. I know we have to, you know, if we shut that road down, we'll have to get in touch with the county. When I called last year, when we couldn't have it, you know, there was a fee for that, and he said, just hang on to it, you know, they kept the money and they'll just apply it this year, so. So, the plan is, oh, we got new council members, so. But what we had was, what, you know, we normally have done, sorry, so I have to back up a little bit. What we've done, we'd had, had it in the lines building, but with all the COVID restrictions, we would have been limited on so many vendors and everything else that went on. So, that's when some of us got together, kind of had a little committee, came to the council and said, can we do this outside? So, everything would be set up on the street, what street is it? Not Broadway, I don't even know, in front of the hardware store. That's the street that we would have shut, shut down. And then we have all the vendors, there we have the food, you know, everybody comes with, you know, whatever, their expertise with the food and all of that. And, yeah, so we just need that street to shut down for the day, and just, we wanted to just move our event outside.
So, I had a question for you on that, Carolyn.
Yep.
You said you contacted the county?
I had to, because that was county street.
Yeah, and then did they make you go for a permit?
Yeah, something like that. Yep.
Yeah, no, I just, I was wondering, I didn't realize they'd make you pay for a permit.
Yeah, it was forty dollars, so the chamber paid that.
Okay. I just thought I was hearing something wrong here, but.
Yep, no, they didn't wanna refund the money, but they said, just call us next year and we'll be fine. They just had to go and check and make sure everything was.
No, it's.
Okay, so.
So, there'd be like tents covering for vendors or all, or?
Yeah, so we have a big tent for, can I just do this back here, or take it off or not? I just feel like it's falling down, but I'll just do this, otherwise it's back in the corner. Yeah, we have a big tent for the food, all the food is under a big tent, we have wagon rides, horse drawn wagon rides. There's music, and then all of the vendors that we have, the crafts and that sort of people, they bring their own tents. So, we line them up and down the street, that was our plan. So, we'll just go, you know, not on the sidewalk, so they can still get into the businesses, but they're on the street. And we had about forty vendors lined up last year, you know, counting the food people. So, it was a big disappointment when we couldn't have it. And it wasn't you, it was the state shut us down, so. On the fourth, fourth of December, first Saturday, it's always the first Saturday of December.
So, how's the council feel? It doesn't affect any of the other vendors on the streets, the hardware store, the bars, the gas station, will you seem to have any conflicts about it?
No.
Okay.
No, in fact, probably we'll help them, you know?
Well, sure.
We don't wanna bring in satellites, you know, we talked about that last year, and we'd already met, we met this week, the four of us, to kick this off again. Yeah, so, you know, they'll, visit them, actually, like Brenda down in the corner, she wanted a little tent set up with whatever her crafty friends do, so.
Very good.
Yeah, so we think it'll help.
Okay.
And we actually maybe would have even extended a little bit from beyond the corner bar down a little ways, if that would be okay, because we had so many people. So, and our hours are from noon until six, but we would set up at, eh, seven thirty in the morning. But we would need that road shut down the entire day, and then, but then we'd be shut down by six, and hopefully everyone's out by seven.
Questions from you people? I got consensus then?
Yep, so.
Yeah, unless something happens again, I mean.
No, don't say that.
I don't think it's going to, but just.
Jessica is right, and we know, I mean, we had about ten days of notice before, and for those of you that don't know, you know, we have the Goodie Vokes Fest, right, because it's a German community, this is the, the German Christmas market. And if you know what a German Christmas market is, it's an outdoor market right at Christmas time. So, there's a German word for it. Kind of a market, marketing, yeah, so. So, that's what we're, what we're looking to do.
Yeah, if you wanna make a motion, we can.
Yeah, I think motion, then we go ahead and go that straight up to the German Christmas market.
Motion made in section, allow the German Christmas market, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried.
Thank you. And just a question, do you want me to come back each year, or can this be perpetual?
You know, there'll be different councils here, so. I would say probably just give a okay.
Yes, okay. Okay, we'll do it.
Formalities.
All righty, well, you all better show up. Be ready to drink some German beer.
Thank you very much.
That's big. Do you have time? What time does that run?
Noon to six.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn.
Parkway Communities.
Hi, so.
You wanna go with forty in the next? Yeah.
I'm Sean, I'm the owner of the Parkway Communities, we own and manage all of Homestead, we have about twenty-one of them, so, the country, the basement, the hallways, the family, all of them, and the very grand, the, so. And we have a contract on the, the new countryside in the mobile home park. We should be closing shortly. So, do you guys, you want some background on us, or?
I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah, it'd be helpful for us, yeah.
Somebody else owns the road to the mobile home park.
Which one?
I'm sorry?
Which one?
Uh, it used to be called, on the road, that's right next to the gas station.
On the, on the southeast side.
Yeah, my studies, used to be. So, if anybody knows their neighborhood, they do the streets, it's still pretty long. Um, so, we own the family communities. Our plan with Goodie Manor is kind of get the aesthetics done, get the roads done. We want to have a big new homes, and typically we use, call it, actually, three bedroom, one or two bed after homes, or sixteen, like, seventy, six feet, if we can get them in. So, to promote our families there. And we, we don't, we don't rent homes typically, we either get a mortgage, or we do a lease to own type. One of the things we noticed when we were going through the diligence is Manor, so, so there's twenty-three spaces in the main section of the park, and then in the Manor, which is half, yeah, which is, which is half, which is half ours, is, is, so this half of the street, I guess, is kind of ours? This portion there? We own these ones here, and a couple, these two here, all of this over here is not ours. So, we also, so, it looks like their part of the street looks like the surface of the moon. And usually, so. Ray's properties actually has a contract right now with Allison's to do, to do paving on it. What they're supposed to do, they're supposed to do two inch overlay on the street and fill the puddles. We'd like you to annex that street and make it a city street. We don't wanna leave you with a mess, though. So, we wanna figure out a way to share in the cost, pay for, do something, so that that street is paved and done before you have. The issue, I think, we have this, I don't know if doing too much overlay on the street is gonna be what, what Goodie Manor wants to be done.
That's what was done the last time, and you can see when it is now. I mean, that was all blacktopped, and then we didn't matter having it back to the top corner there, because we had to build something in there, but that was owned by Joel Maltese, Maltese at the time. And he didn't want, first, he just put blacktop down, where there's no base in it, it'd have to have a base in it, and for the city to take it over, you'd have to do it.
So, so Allison, I guess, would fill it and cut the cloth down, and do it the right way as far as the overlay, but like I said, I'm sure some of you guys would be happy with. So, I guess the question is, is one, you know, would you have, you trust in annexing it, and two, how do we figure out a part of our, we're getting the street, the streets right away, not leaving it with a mess, 'cause, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to, we don't want to say, hey, like, we can absorb all the costs and, and, and pave it for us, that's not our intention, one, they're both paved. We've already got quotes on the tree trimming, and the trees all like to be trimmed in, in both sides. You know, as we put in houses, we'll fix the stuffs for the sewers, and, and all that. Hopefully, we'll just put a new mailboxes up, because those just don't look too good. But anyway, that's, that's the plan, so that's kind of what we'd like to do, and I don't think it's gonna be resolved tonight, but. Some of you, some of you can kind of work together. I don't, I don't want to have Allison's coming out to over and do it, if, if, you know, it doesn't make any sense if we're gonna figure something out, so.
Well, if the city, the city does it, we assess so much back to each lot, you know, but that's if we own it, we don't own it, so. I mean, if it was, if it was built, I could see the city taking it over and then going from there.
So, I guess the question is, would you wanna do a special assessment, and have us contribute upfront to the dollar cost of, of doing it, so that you guys, the city would be able to annex it? I mean, I don't know how you do the file, it seems like, seems like even in the winter, it'd be easier just to run files across the unit, instead of stopping and adding up and stuff. It just, it doesn't seem to make much sense for us to own it, especially since we don't even own three quarters of the houses on the street, so.
Yeah, but you do want it. The problem is, is it's really a bad, it was, it's really a bad design. The problem, the city doesn't want the liability of it either, because if you put a two inch overlay on, bang, and I cut it. What, what I, I'm the city attorney, so, you know, what I'd recommend is, it would have to be engineered, it really have to engineer it. Right, I don't know what the drainage is, maybe Steve can tell us about that, but you really need to have proper engineering done, because anytime we do a street, and I bet you ain't much base on there, and if we expect even to assess it back, they, we need to have the base put in, a curb, do we want curb and gutter, do we, don't we, or, you know, I, I don't know. But the, the, the problem, this is why most governments don't like to take over private streets, because the, in the end, then the citizens are gonna come down there and say, in five years from now, they're gonna want a new street, and it's gonna cost a lot of money. I mean, I would, I would, I know engineer, but to dig, dig up that street and do it right is gonna be two, three hundred thousand dollars.
I mean, yeah, we could have our engineer look at it.
But the problem, what's not fair to you, what I see your issue is, is that those people on, why should you put in a new street for the people on the other side that, 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 uh, own it, they're using it too?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's kind of our position, but we still, I mean, if we're, if we come in to do it, and the city says, no, we're not interested, we're gonna, we're gonna have Allison fill it and make it as good as we can.
Sure, sure.
I, I guess the idea was, instead of doing that, since it's kind of half and half, or, I think, to, to do it right, maybe participate with the city, so we're not asking you to absorb the cost, the total cost.
Typically, and if a private developer came into town, they wanted, that we would probably, and that the city can do whatever they want, typically, the, the developer pays the cost of the infrastructure to our specs. Then they turn it over to the city after they pay for it the first time. Then in the twenty or twenty-five years, then we go back and assess it for any repairs that need to be done. I don't know what the council wants to do in this situation, but it could be a big li, could be a big liability. I mean, I'm just guessing, but I, I, I can't believe you could build that whole street there for two, three hundred thousand dollars. Based upon our projects before, I don't believe that would happen, 'cause then, then, I don't know where the sewer, where is the sewer out there, Steve?
Sewer's down underneath the trailers.
Yeah, they're, they're not in the right way.
Oh, they're, they're.
There's nothing in the, the street itself.
So, it goes in the back?
Yeah, well, it goes down the middle of it.
You mean, that would be to the, to the west of it?
Right down the middle of the trailer lots.
Oh, in the middle, oh, okay.
We, we, yeah, we, yeah, actually, we have a slope, and it must be, it's sand, and it's, it's.
So, there, that's where the main is, is right in the middle, middle there?
Correct.
I mean, it's just, it's just a street, but I'd still want our, our engineering to look at it. I mean, I, and I understand where you're coming from, let's say, if we did it, let's say, right now, it'd still be commercial far as our, 'cause you're making money on it. So, that would mean we'd assess the whole part of it through the property owners. You know? So, I mean, and I don't, and I understand where you're coming from, and as far as Steve goes, snowflowing would be easier if we started wanting to just come around with it. Because right now, we go down and turn around and come back, right, Steve? You know, so I see your point, I s, I mean, I just want our engineer to look at it before we go too far.
Yeah, and like I said, we're, we're not trying to stick the city with a paved, paved streets for us. Trying to figure out a way to do it where it makes sense, where it makes sense for us, and, like I said, I don't want, I don't want Allison's coming to do too much overlay, if it's gonna make this whole process.
Well, if, if we have to do an assessment, I can tell you, we can't now, because it has to go through a process, a public hearing, and a.
Well, it wouldn't be done till next year.
Yeah, yeah.
And we could, and we could, and we could for the winter, just for now, we could, if we have to, if we went through a cloud, fill up the puddles as best we can, and just deal with it. I, like I said, I'm not expecting a resolution tonight, but I just wanted to know, hey, if you guys are saying there's a possibility that we could work something, or figure something out, or do something. If it was not this year, then I reckon we had spent fifty thousand dollars at Allison's, kind of, to do this, which was asshole, doesn't make sense. I'll, I'll have the, I'd rather have the other part of the park done anyway, and, you know, figure it out from there.
Yeah, I think we should just have it done, if it's gonna be done, do it right, you know?
Are you proposing that you'd be willing to go half on it, or something like that, whatever the cost are to redo the street?
I, I don't wanna go, yeah, maybe, it's, I guess, I guess, I guess it's fair, it's the possible, we have to do, and, and, and follow this, I mean. I hate that, I know, we'll save money on the following, and everything, and so, we gotta look at that as well, and, so. We've got some, we've got some communities that have saved streets, so. From our perspective, it's, it's not, so, it's, it's less for us to maintain, but we came into the city only, this is the first time I've come into this, where it's like. So, it's all off, it's all lost, and it's kind of hard, hard to have a city, and, and, and. Like I said, I wasn't expecting a resolution tonight, but if the best, if the best way to do this, Allison's fill the puddles, so we can drive through the street for the, for the winter.
I do think it's great, anything you could do, and all the people on that, that's fantastic.
We do, we do have a community in Fort Worth, Indiana, I don't know how the, I don't know how the homeowners go in there and look at people in the eyes. I have a G for any, right, and I can hardly read those cards, it's like.
Just like this one here, around the curve.
That one's really good, if you're interested in it. It was painful to drive through there, it was so bad, but I think it's something that we gotta get over.
So, I got a question for you, away from the street, the street, how about if we just get our engineer, if we can get a permanent cost? And then, but I'm more concerned about them trailers on the other part, and then the, at the top north end of them. Some are pretty, really bad, really, really bad.
You got it on the removal section?
Yeah, right there. Some of them trailers are from the fifties.
So, two of them, seven, I think, I remember nine, two of them are, are abandoned, they're gonna get pulled out.
Nine and fourteen, I saw.
Nine and fourteen, okay. So, two of them will get pulled out, a bunch of them are pretty good. I think once it's okayed, and once the trees are done, and you can kind of see it's going on with the trailers. We've got siding programs, 'cause the, the trailers are owned by the homeowners. So, we've got siding programs, and we do a nail, we get to the house each month, and east side property, and side house, which makes them incredibly good. I didn't send words in pictures of that, actually. Did I say a word to you, Laura?
No, Laura.
Okay. And then just stuff like the mailboxes up here, the terrible needs to be done.
There's two lots right there that are, we, we pulled, we pulled, we pulled two out last year.
Well, what we'd like, what we'd like to do is, where they get pulled out, I don't think this guy's paying rent this first, seriously? So, so what we'd like to do is put new homes in. To replace the ones that are gonna make it pull out, and just, and then every room, fix the plumbing stuff, fix the plumbing stuff, and, you know. It's probably thirty thousand dollars of transportation right there. Where they can't really get rid of all the stuff.
You know, anything to make good approval, it would be, is, I think, is council be happy with.
It, it was like, so, I mean, our good neighbors, and why the kids who live on our properties, they're not ashamed to bring their friends over to their house. So, that's, that's what, that's how we look at, look at the houses.
I just go down Manor Avenue, like, last week, and I don't know if that's what you folks are, are doing, but things are really, things are really rude on that street, as far as how things look, the trailer houses, and, and some of those that were kind of half done, look like they're pretty much done now, with siding gone, and, uh, it looks, like I said, I don't know who did that.
It's, it's probably us.
It, it improved a lot, so, great to see.
Yeah, we're, 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 we're gonna close down, you know, because we here, they're here, and the finances, the place, I think, they're doing the wrong, I shouldn't want to, really ask them. Yes, it, it is a bad manager, I think, you mentioned, there's a building in progress across the street.
Sister living.
Sister living. We had, I don't, I don't know how to crime rate, or anything, I was a police officer for twenty years before entering into all this wonderful, yes. But, you know, it will, it will absolutely affect people that are above the problem, we have a hundred and thirty police calls, and, um, for only property, which is over. Then one of the sixty-nine spaces was forty-three occupied, and fifty-two, twenty families, and we have, I don't know, we have one or two of them last year, so. If, 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 in long, long term, for the portfolio, it doesn't bring us any guys, that's what I'm saying. Anyway, that's what I, that's what I should do.
Thank you.
So, we can, just, so, you think that, just, um, you think that you don't have an engineer like that?
Yeah, I, I got our engineer with Steve, with Al, with Tyler. Steve, Steve is the maintenance director.
I talked to Steve, and I talked to Lori, and you guys are incredibly helpful, and being from Chicago, being able to actually talk to people who own the neighborhood, and everything helpful, or just? It's been a hard experience, so. We got, we got, we got very, we got one of them, bringing our wife on a loan in the Vegas, and we needed a wedding, um, our, our wedding license, your marriage certificate was under. And we, she called, she called down to Carson County, and they asked for it, and the woman down, so I was sent it out today, and she goes, really, that's it? I think you answered enough.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
You got, you got your card or anything? Anything to get a hold of, yeah?
Get Lori, they might do anything.
No, that's why I want Lori and Steve.
Yeah, who's got it?
I just want to make sure they could get a hold of you.
Yeah, they can, she probably said the time.
Oh, no. No, this is free.
Like I said, if you're gonna clean it up, it's all right.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go on here, resolution approving of support of the Zombrewol Sanitary Sewer District.
Well. I guess, my name is Walter Reschner, I'm a water supporter of the G R S G. This is our, we're in a tiny movement, so, yeah, we have to, we have to, so, I already, we're gonna have to do that. How would you like to go through this, or we have a question?
Just give us an overview.
Okay.
We've been through it a few times, so.
So, the resolution is one that has been approved by all the other cities, and, you know, there are four cities involved, we're making my island, Wario, and Zobra. I think last night, I approved theirs, and so, it's, I think, we're the, we're the last one, not late, but just the last one. The history here is, as you probably know, and I probably don't need to repeat too much here, but the idea is to build a regional wastewater treatment plant in Zombrewol, probably a new plant in a new location. And not necessarily use their existing plants. And so that's where some of these, uh, lead-in paragraphs here are talking about, uh, treatment plants and force mains, retention basins, and things like that. Good Hugh won't need a retention basin, the other cities will. Um, we have done some cost estimating on this and have come to the conclusion that it's a roughly seventy million dollar cost. That includes all the improvements with Good Hugh, in other words, a, a pump station and, and enforcement. And all the other cities that pump, that will be pumping to Zombreau, and then a new treatment plant in Zombreau. There is an estimated inflation of fourteen million, and I was told to let you know that, that's the governor's office that has identified what that inflation rate is going to be, but that's not us. So, they have asked to add that fourteen million, uh, inflation, what they're calling it, to the seventy million estimated cost of the overall project for a total of eighty-four million. There is, um, some specific things related to Good Hugh. Um, and I don't know if you, if you have any specific questions about what your, uh, roles and responsibilities are in terms of not only just what to do with this. Resolution, but also just more technical, um, I'm the one who, with my, through my staff. Designed, uh, all of the lift stations to pump down to Zombreau, and so I have some insight into what we, it was Good Hugh, if you have any questions about that.
So every, every, the biggest question I have for people, every lift pump is redundant, right?
Correct.
That, that's what I've been telling them, I was hoping I was right.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
And it depends on the risk you wanna take, at, at hospitals, for example, and, and ones that cannot afford at all ever to go down, and you have three pumps, in many cases. For Good Hugh, we could do two, we've, we've costed out two pumps, one pump can, can pump all the flow, so it's a fully redundant system, w- but with, just with two pumps. And we find that on the municipal side, this is adequate.
Okay, well, that was my question for, because, you know, you couldn't, we couldn't afford to have a pump gone down and only have one on.
Yeah, yeah, that's something that we can continue to, to talk about, uh, if you want three, that's not difficult to do, it's just another cost to pump in slightly larger station, so how's it? Three would give you belt and suspenders, two gives you a, a good belt.
So the other question is. And it's, Good Hugh continues to build, add on, let's say, manufacturing housing, whatever. This station is gonna, we aren't gonna have to go bigger or have them limit us to how much growth we have, are they?
It depends on how much you, uh, Good Hugh grows, but we did, we did dial in a couple areas of potential growth, residential as well as industrial. And we've already dialed that in, in terms of flows and, and needs, um, so there, there is some additional capacity to that station, but it's not, it's not like, you know, a hundred percent of water.
I just don't wanna be limited, I mean, I'm for it a hundred percent, don't get me wrong, but I'm just, I just gotta look at, so we're not. Saying, oh, you only can put in thirty houses from here on out, that's, yeah.
Right, yeah, there's, there's a couple of ways to look at that, one is that we did dial in, uh, and I can't tell you the exact percentage, but it wasn't a small percentage of additional flow. That we might expect in the future, over the next twenty years. The other way to do it is not only that, but also decide the station, so if we needed to, we could actually add another pump to it. If, then we would want to pump with two pumps rather than just a single pump, so there's a couple different ways to approach that.
Okay, I mean, now, there's my concerns between pumps and that limitation.
Right.
Anybody else got any questions here?
So, if, if we outgrew our capacity, there are ways that we could improve it, just saying, and, and, and accommodate for that.
Correct.
Without, well, I hope I did.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that, that's just good engineering practice, you know, to, to look at, we always add ten, twenty percent, sometimes more, depending on what. The outlook is for economic development in the area, and then, uh, uh, and then we, we usually accommodate, set up some kind of combination for more than that. If, for some great reason, you know, that there's additional growth for the first.
And so the, that's the, um, processing plant in Zombreau also has been preparing for additional capacity and.
Correct, yep, yeah, we have given them, uh, a set of flows and loads, so flows is large, what you have. Loads are usually divided into two things, B O B, which is bi- biological, and T S S, which is the solid supply. And so we provided, we, we escalated those as well on that flow.
Do, do we, does the city, like, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, it's almost like a power line, like, I'm looking at it as a power line. Um, you know, if you build a solar farm or a wind farm, you have to go get spotted, a power line on the grid, to be able to get on there. So do we, so we gotta get this, the material down there, that's one issue we have, but then, do, are we, do we get a designated percentage of that? For, so, so what if, Zombreau grows faster than Good Hugh, but then later on, we grow faster. Do they get, do we each get a designated percentage of that plant? I guess that's my, I, I think it's important that the city, whether we, whether or not we even use it or not, today or tomorrow, the next day. Just. We should, because again, goes to your question is, we have two issues, one, the processing ability of the plant, that, where if we're paying for it. We should be able to use that now or in the future, and then the second issue is getting it down there, I can see where we'd have to pay to, another pump or whatever to get it down there. But then, what if Pine Island or Zombreau or somebody else, they use all the capacity, how, how do we work that issue out?
So, the way that, and again, this will be an agreement that you would have with the regional services, but Good Hugh, at this point, at least as far as the cost, which is correlated to flow. Good Hugh is about twelve percent of the, the total amount.
That's as of today, though.
As of today, yeah, um, and Zombreau has, has dialed in additional capacity for their plant. It'll be a new plant, so it'll be significantly more capacity than what all four cities sent to it right now. But there will have to be some upgrades too, that if, if capacity reaches a certain point.
Well, I guess what my concern is, how do we protect, I guess that's, they might know, how do we protect the city so that, okay, if I, in, in ten years from now, or maybe will, a year, maybe it won't. But, or twenty years from now, we already said, oh, we're going, but, you know, Zombreau or Pine Island, they already took that capacity, so we can't use it later on down the line.
We are allocated, uh, a certain amount of flow by, by this, and that flow is significantly higher than what Good Hugh has flowing right now. So that's, that's the buffer right there.
So you, another question, so you, you're, you're also the city engineer, you're Good Hugh's engineer, and then, do each one of those other. Places that they have their own engineer, are you going for the whole deal, or tell me, tell me about that?
So, um, uh, Good Hugh is I S G, Pine Island, I believe, is the H K S, uh, Wanamingo, I think, is Wissa.
Okay.
And then Zombreau is the H K S.
So you're just for Good Hugh?
Yeah, we have all year.
So, so you're, so that's why I think it's important that we get, get that, I mean, I just think that you don't wanna box yourself in, and.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And we, if we have so much, like I said, if we have so much spot on the grid, or in the plant, we don't wanna ever give that up, because we, otherwise. Because I could see, I mean, Zombreau is going pretty fast, Pine Island is too, and, and we are too, Wanamingo, I don't know, but, but I mean, I just. I just don't wanna make sure the city doesn't get boxed in and said somebody else, because this is a plant, well, we got our stuff there first, so, I don't know, that's just an issue.
So that's, that's probably more on the agreement side of things, uh, we have allocated three hundred and thirty thousand gallons per day, and, and they, they sort of can't take that away from us. So we are allocated up to that.
What are the majors now, Steve?
Sixty, well, depends on time, they will probably have sixty, sixty nine thousand milliliters, so.
All right.
So there's a, it's, the pretty, that's average, and I'm talking about P.
Yeah.
But still, there's, there's, uh, pretty significant buffer in that.
Okay, well, that's, that's, I just wanna make sure we're, that's what I'm here, yeah.
And the other question I have is, like, Steve is getting, like, you don't have your B license yet, do you?
No.
Do we have to have a licensed person?
Uh, great question, there's no treatment, that's crazy.
That, that's. No, we have, probably have a collection system.
Yeah.
Collection, collection system license is what we would have, where that's, that's the kind of big thing, is this district is gonna be solely its own entity. Where there will be representatives from every town.
That'd be a joint power.
Yes.
Yeah, like the fire department.
Yeah, where basically, yeah, this district will employ its own personnel. Where, yeah, and here, we'd have to have just a, a, a collection system license, which is very, that's, that one's easy to get.
Yes, no, no.
Very.
Yeah, so you don't have to go into the, the B license or, that, and that's a question I had, you know, so.
No, you probably have enough, you know, you have the G, you just have to have that collection system.
Right, yeah, there's no treatment, that would be crazy, maybe we'd need to operate it.
I mean, I just, I mean, we pay now for it, so. That's it.
Couple of questions may proceed, uh, we're gonna see, are we gonna see a license, is that a good saving, by doing it, does they do? For the city, oh, long term, I don't see how it's gonna, okay, I mean, you've just seen what I've had to spend in the last year updating very small things.
I love you like dog.
No, and it, I mean, it, it makes, without really, I mean, I don't even know where, their estimate, how it costs to be, seven, nine million, that's.
That initial, yeah.
Yeah, to, to steer an operation of maintenance on a plant is, is outrageous, and then. As the regulations get tighter and tighter, so that takes more and more hours time too, so then we're gonna pull the staff, and do everything else, and get our staff one way or another.
And that, that's where I was coming from, because we could free them up from the plant, or twice a day, actually, you know, or we could.
Ending on call for it.
Yep.
Um, I, another question, do, do you have any concerns if we need to address these things?
Get the fight in, that's, that's where I'm at.
What, what about fluoride, but, is, hasn't there been some concern of, you know, water softeners and that, that fluoride, the state might, um, come down on, on somebody?
There's a couple of different ways to approach that, one is, I don't think we, we know the clarity of the fluoride limits at this point, or.
At this point, but we, I mean, they were gonna give us a fluoride limit, but we, we variance that, just because they knew this was happening to, or. That stuff all depends upon where we're jumping, I would say, to.
So Zombreau will get the fluoride on.
And they won't, yeah.
But they may pass it on to us, so that's something else that we're gonna need to, to look at when, when that time comes. But at this point, D C A is not imposing any limits on this new lift station, which isn't very true, and we're, we're still very early in the process.
Basically, he, this is just you guys saying, yep, let's move forward this, it's, it's a fine, another item that the I F R would go and need.
Yeah, so this is a, thank you, that, this is a good segue, this is, this is a resolution that comes from all the cities, that, that then is. Sent to the legislature in order for them to begin the bonding process. Um, there is a, you've probably seen the numbers, but, uh, somewhere between seven and eight million would be what, what, what Good Hugh's portion of this would be. So that's something that, at half of that would be paid for by bonding, and the other half would be paid for through other regular sources from the city.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, or?
Neither, do we need a?
Yeah, we need a.
A motion.
Motion to pass the resolution, yes.
I need, I need that we pass this resolution for the sanitary district.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Motion is made, second to pass the resolution for the sanitary sewer district, on, please, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you.
Yep.
Now the resolution can support the Good Hugh, how many, wants to use radios?
Do you, Jason, do you know anything about this one, I, it was sent to me by, um.
Dustin?
Um, that is Brian, and then Wanamingo helped me with this too.
Yeah, and I, I'm not aware of any of this yet.
They're asking Good Hugh County, or we're going to join with, um, all these other communities and townships, to ask Good Hugh County to put money towards this radio.
That's right, they're, they're getting away from the eight hundred megahertz, so it's going something different.
You know, the radios that are, are all no longer supported by any software, that, that makes sense, yeah, so. Obviously, they're, they're, and they are expensive, and, yeah, and, and, I, I hear that from the Zombreau area and the association, you know, and. How many radios they all need, and how expensive they are, and, yeah. My worry is, they're gonna need help with coordinating somehow, so, uh, to cover all the expenses, and, and.
The thing about is, you gotta keep everything up to date as much as you possibly can.
And, and then, their radios are coordinated with one another, so they can all talk to each other, believe, uh, words, right? And, and, uh, so that's why they need to all update as quickly as possible, if they do have that communication, you know, services. So I think if we can help them, well, if that'd be great, myself.
So if all of this money comes from ARPA? Or is it a certain? So Good Hugh County has been allowed the, the nine million dollars, so each of the communities is looking for a piece of that nine million, is that?
I think that's, I think I read it as.
Okay. Care assessment, yeah.
The county buys the radios and they give them to the, the county uses the, federal government's money to buy the radios, and they give them to the participating organizations.
Okay.
So the land maker, that a motion, the land maker?
Sure.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, second to adopt the resolution, support Good Hugh County ARPA funds, they utilize for the fire departments, first responders, and EMS, on, please, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Good Hugh sign up, they finally got back to me this week, he was having a little trouble finding it. This, this here is not a good picture of it.
Come on this screen.
Because it was, it is metal, and they like to welcome it to Good Hugh, it's, it's about like the wildcat sign on the football field, this way it's supposed to be. So it'd be cut out there, the bottom part, I don't know, but Lions, J C, four H, it's like the Lions, they'd have their own emblem, J C's, I'm not sure, four H, five would have their own emblem. You know, so that could be solid, but it was thirty-nine hundred dollars per sign.
Would it be unreasonable to have some other sign vendors put together a?
No, we'd do whatever was wanted. We just have the one. When, when we did it, we did it with, the only reason I went back to this, we did it with the J C's of, uh, city and the Lions together. This is what basically, what, what original plan was, is Jake was gonna do one, Milt was gonna do one, Ken, Kenny was gonna do one. You know, just spread it around, and I don't, I don't have an issue with it, but. Nor I think, well, it just should be uniform, but if they all do it, I don't have an issue at all. Chad Ryan is the other one, that's who it was. You know, so we weren't gonna just limit it to one person.
Well, and I, I'm even thinking, you know, just even to have somebody come up with a whole different design, just to look at. You know, to give some, some choice.
I was thinking what kind of plan, and, and I was hoping maybe if we were gonna go with this, that would there be someplace we could do some kind of, something hanging off the bottom with the, with the state championship high school team?
You can do anything you want.
Yeah, you know, I mean, that, that would be something that'd be cool, I think, if that, that, have, and then it would, maybe the attitude could be changed, or, you know, to, to, to want to go, so.
I mean, this, yeah, this, this is just one that we had four years ago. Cause I think Milt was gonna do this one too, but he never did, so.
So then the other thing I thought, how our churches to do, and I had church about, you know, you see city signs with churches on them.
Right.
I don't know, I'm just throwing ideas out too.
I think, you know, when I look at it, we're growing so much as a city, and when we say a community city, the barn is fine in the silo, but we have, we've grown so much, we're not just a farm city. We have plenty of people moving to town that have never been on a farm, and if we, we are a community city. So maybe somebody could come up with, I'm not, you know, dismissing it, I'm just like, then I look at the Lions, and what about our business owners? We have, you know, other big businesses coming in now, are we gonna limit it to those four organizations, or are there other people?
The, the, the organizations that are on it were just put on it because that's who was here.
Oh, okay, so it doesn't necessarily, it, is it necessarily gonna be that?
No, it doesn't. No, that, that's just the organizations that were here.
Yeah.
That's why that's on there.
I do think that's a good idea, and couldn't we add like the side of the barn, you know, a, a picture of the manufacturing plant, the assisted living, you know, and some, two, three, four different things maybe.
Yeah, I think maybe if some other company could come up with another design or something, so we have something else to look at.
Yeah, we could, we could try to find some more, I mean, I don't, this, you guys wanted, this is what I had, so.
Uh, Walter's just saying they have a graphics department at I S G as well, which we want, them to look at it.
Yeah. That'd be great.
They're an invasion form, just to scheme this up.
Yep.
You know.
Anybody wanna be on the committee for this?
I'll, I'll appoint him too.
But there is somebody on the community who really wants to be on this committee, who was asked several times.
Who?
Joe, Ben, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he, he's expressed interest, and so he would be, if we wanna be a community city, let's get some other people from the community.
I think Joe should be appointed then.
No, no, we can, we can have whoever we want.
It doesn't have to be a citizen.
It's just that, well, it's just that, I want the cause to remember to be a laser to it.
Right, right.
And you only can have two, so. You two wanna do it?
We get appointed?
Thank you. Thank you. You got that, dog.
I've, I've got something going on.
Yeah, nothing going on.
So, so then, okay, so Joe's probably got somebody that he'd wanna bring on too, right? I'll, I'll contact Joe, cause he's been in contact, and he's gave, talked about a couple of things, so I'll call him. He'll be so excited, he was appointed.
Yep. Okay, twenty twenty-two budget, preliminary budget. The same one we had.
Yeah, they're all the same. Do we just need one more?
Yeah.
So I got, um, the county made me this nice spreadsheet. And, um, I can enter the proposed levy amount, and it will show us, based on last year, how much somebody's taxes would go up, based on their estimated value. Now, it's not, they're not claiming one hundred percent accuracy, um, but five ninety-nine was, I think that was, um.
Ten percent.
That was nine point five percent.
Yeah.
So you could actually go up more to capture that value than what we were guessing, we were, we were always pretty conservative, four percent.
Thank you for coming, yeah, thanks, thank you.
So you see, so like a house that's two hundred, valued at two hundred fifty thousand, should only go up two dollars and forty-four cents for the year.
Two percent?
At nine point five percent. If I'm doing this right.
Yeah, you are. Well, cause you're, no, 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 she, her and I, we're, her, we spent a lot on the phone.
Yeah, yeah.
We figured it out.
This for Ben.
So just go down, where the, where the contributor, Lori, that.
Yeah.
Kind of highlight section says, fine, just change it up, put, uh, put five sixty-eight in there. Okay.
And that would?
That would, that, they're, actually the city portion, that, that does decrease. So I think a lot of this has to do with the, this like, the one building, I think that came out down here with the egg partners, that big shop, and there's some stuff that, because, you know, with the growth, growth solves a lot of problems, so we, because we have growth, we're able to keep the, uh, actual individual property owners, uh, actual city portion taxes relatively flat, I mean, we, and then, um, you know, um, and because we have more houses, more this, more that, that's, that's why we, that's why the theory is, we, we did that, that way, so. Um, so you can play around, so that's the number, if you look at the number here, that's, well, that's five, this license five sixty-eight, that's at four percent. Um, they actually, we think they're gonna go down, if you put in this bigger number that we just talked about, the six oh one, put that one, can you put that one in?
Which one?
A six oh one, seven forty-five. And then, then, then you're gonna, on a hundred thousand dollar house, it's gonna go up, I mean, a little bit.
Two dollars and sixty-five cents a year.
Yeah, well, we think, we think.
No, yeah.
But you don't know.
They're using the information they have right now.
The best information they have.
That's the information they have right now, which, I suppose it could change by?
Right, right.
January.
Now, this is, it doesn't mean you have to do this, I mean, but before, we've tried to keep that, okay, who could I run? We tried to keep that levy amount so that at least somebody's taxes didn't, didn't go up, or maybe down a little bit.
Tried to keep it as fly as we could.
As fly as we could, so no individual person should, should go up. Now, this doesn't affect, now, if somebody's value goes up, so if somebody's value goes up, you're gonna shift it around to different houses, who's actually paying, right? We can't do anything about that, we just can't.
Right, if their house was two hundred fifty thousand last year, and now it's coming in at two eighty.
Yeah.
We can't help that.
But, but, but then somebody else's in town is gonna go, is it gonna be less?
Maybe, yeah.
Well, no, yeah, cause you only got so much.
Right, because the levy amount stays the same.
Yeah, levy amount stays the same.
Any other part, portion of that is, you could raise it ten percent today, and in December, when we have to finalize that, we can go down, we cannot go up. So if we underestimate, then we're screwed.
So is it a sin to do ten percent? We're sitting down here all by itself.
All by itself, but nothing.
Well, well, last year, we went, we went up what, four or five?
Four percent.
Four percent, but we thought that was gonna be a real big, we got down to the end of the year, that wasn't raising anybody's taxes.
What, what I, it, I, I don't think if you get all caught in that percentage, it's the number that really.
Yeah, it's really the levy.
It's really the levy amount. So if we, if you adopted, if you propose a levy amount of six oh one, seven forty-five, uh, then, then we, we were, we're, we're really saying we're gonna, everybody's taxes are gonna be insane. You understanding that, what we're doing there to them? It's not ten percent, it's six oh one, six oh one, seven forty-five, so that means that our tax, everybody's taxes should be, remain relatively flat. Now, now, this is a preliminary, and if we decide we get more information before that time, then you could change it again, I suppose.
Yeah, we could go down.
We could always go down, we just can't go up.
We can't go back up again.
And do we kind of feel like, maybe they just need to take a bigger jump right now, to cover those inflation?
Well, you don't want to just capture, I mean, why wouldn't you?
The other, the other part of that is, is to bring in, there's somebody picking up bonds off, so we could do some streets. We got, we got new streets, so.
Wouldn't it make more sense to do it at a higher interest rate, especially since we're getting, obviously getting a break from the egg partners, that's what's really helping us, so would you wanna take the?
Yeah, 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 I think we do, and you gotta remember, we're not gonna get any real big advantage of these other ones for, for, for quite a while, and then we all do that going in, but, uh, so.
Yeah, egg partners and bonds are through us, so.
Right.
That's all tax money coming in.
So that's to our advantage.
Oh, yeah, and, and then we did, we did pay, we did pay the, uh, I think you recall though, that that street down there has been paid for, so that project is all over, I mean, the, the green building down, that's all overpaid, there's no debt or anything else on that, that's, and the street's all in, that's all said and done. And then again, we sold the, we sold the senior living stuff, that money, we got our money back from that, we got our money back from the depot, so we really don't have any outstanding.
Except for the bonds and the streets.
Yeah, there's no, there's no really dead stuff out there, we got right now, we got all our money out.
Right.
So it's whatever you feel that you people are.
So that's what it's at right now, is five forty-seven, and we wanna go to six oh one, is that it?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, five forty-seven.
Prelimarily, that doesn't.
Prelimarily, right.
Well, two twenty-one, we were, this year we were at five forty-seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And the only reason we can do this, because if we capture that growth that we have, without raising anybody's taxes.
So it's fifty-four thousand sometime, or is it increasing?
Well, to me, it makes sense to do that, especially since we can, we can always adjust it and go down.
Right, right.
And so we certainly don't wanna find ourselves in the position that, shoot, we should've gone more. I mean, I have a no-brainer, it's not a hundred percent guaranteed at ten percent, but it helps us.
Yes.
So we can reevaluate it.
Well, we really want all the time, I would just say if somebody makes a motion to adopt it at six oh one, seven forty-five, rather than a percentage, if you can, we don't let it happen.
Cause we don't know.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yep. Well, I'll make the motion that we adopt the, uh, the tax levy at six oh one, seven forty-five, twenty-seven.
Are you in a second? Motion made second to adopt the tax levy at six oh one, seven forty-five, twenty-seven, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried.
Um, and then we have another decision there, if you want to increase the FASA program, that we're all of money, and I have had questions about that in the past, who've gone five thousand dollars. And then people can apply, up, and it's a matching grant, so it, and up to twenty-five hundred, they can receive that.
And we can increase that during the course of the year, yeah.
You've done that in the past, um, yes, um, it's kinda, I was saying.
Are we, are we out of money in there right now?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
So you have people interested, right?
Yeah, I do have, um, a business owner that would like to do some work on the building.
So that, we take that to something, but generally, so.
Yeah, twenty-five thousand, stick it in the FASA pro, program, and then. It also benefits us later down the road too.
It keeps downtown looking nice.
Well, obviously, yeah, we have to give them an incentive to keep it looking nice, yeah.
Make a motion to re, put five thousand dollars in the FASA program.
Do I have a second?
I said.
Motion made second to put five thousand in the FASA program, all in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried.
Um, comment, uh, on the budget here, can, uh, the Rota area ambulance association, they're gonna charge us on our new census number, just so you know that.
Okay.
On a new one, do we have any?
I don't think their census number was that much higher, I saw something, and it was not that.
We just thought we'd figure where, where.
So I saw twelve fifty.
Yeah, it wasn't a lot either, it was at one thousand one hundred seventy-six the last time.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, just so you.
Okay, farmer's market coordinator resignation, I thought I had it in, but no.
No, um, I did email back to Paul and Jill, in this case, and probably need to do it.
No.
But, yeah, Selena said she will finish out the season, and would be happy to help someone next summer learn the ropes.
Deny it.
I think it's gonna go anyway.
Did she have anybody in mind that, that was interested at all, or?
You know, I don't know that, um, I have a thought, but, um, I would prefer to talk to the person first, and it may not run in the way it's been running, it could be slightly different. So make sure that that's okay before I would say it publicly. But we did work pretty hard to find Cena, so.
When she's done, it's really a good job, really good job.
Isn't there more than thirty?
Right, they're all pretty much, though, like, they even have a hard time filling in for her when she has school. She had to hire, um, a high school girl that helped open the market.
That too was there today.
They're not consistently able to be there.
Well, if you know anybody, just ask them. So can I get a motion to accept the resignation?
I'll make the motion to accept Cena's resignation.
Second.
Motion made second to accept Cena's resignation from the farmer's market, all in favor to say aye.
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 Opposed, motion is carried. We're going into our public comment section. Craig.
Yeah, hi.
Concerns to be discussed.
What?
What you concerned?
I was told to come here. Oh, yeah. Is it karaoke night, or?
Close.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here cause I had a mess in my yard, apparently.
You were clearing it up though, after you.
Yeah, I was gone for a whole year down in Florida with medical issues, and had a tree dropped in my front yard the day before I left, and. So when I came back this spring, I had a pretty big mess cleaned up, and I've been working on it.
No, I've seen you been working on it, so.
Yeah, I don't like it anymore, you know, I didn't like it either, you know, with pandemic, and other issues, this, that, and the other thing, and. Probably haven't gotten it done as fast as I wanted to either, but I'm working on it.
I think that's what we're asking, is just to keep working on it.
Yeah, I think it looks a lot better than, well, it looks a lot better than it did when I first started this spring, so.
Well, I just don't know why it's coming down here, since we've done a lot of work on it, so.
Well, I got that, that tree in my front yard, they dropped it, and I just cut it up into firewood, and it's kinda sitting where, cause I'm gonna burn it this winter, you know, and I'm not really into moving. 'cause I'm gonna burn it this winter, you know, and I'm not really into moving, you know, making cute little piles or anything, but that'll be gone.
Okay. No, I don't think they're just concerned, anybody got any questions here?
Uh, I wanted to let the council know that, uh, I recently purchased a forty-four inch tree mover and a bobcat, so if there's any trees that need to be planted, you know, I don't know what you guys are into for boulevard trees, but they've been coming down, but they haven't been going back up.
True, you were on the tree board, weren't you?
Yeah.
What was the deal, I took them off, were they root concerns, or why, why were they pulling them trees out of there?
Well, I just, I, I don't know, like, all downtown trees are, are gone and all, and, and where they redid the streets, you know, they, they cut down all the trees, but there's no boulevard trees going back.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's a concern, I mean, I think, uh, the town looks better with trees, and it's cooler in the summertime, I know leaves and branches are a hassle, and snowy moon, and stuff like that, but, um, I'm still into it, you know, I think trees are good, you know. But I just wanted to let it be known that I've got a big, uh, bobcat with a tree mover on the front, so we could buy him from the nursery, there's a nursery on the way to Cannon Falls on twenty-five.
Oh, yeah.
And they have really nice trees, and, and, you know, they're all, I think they're a wholesaler, I bought trees from them.
Well, they usually sell the baka up there by, uh, Lakeville.
Oh.
That's where most of them go.
Oh, okay. But, um, I, I think they're, like, the better ones are, like, bald and burlapped, I think.
He does that when he pulls them out, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
But with this mover I got, it'd be really easy to, to make the holes to put them in. So I don't know, I'm just letting you all know that.
No, that's a good job.
So, if I keep on working on my yard, can I stay in Goodview?
Well, I gotta get consensus on that.
Okay, well, you all have a nice evening, good to see you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Craig.
Thank you.
No more public comments?
You know what we should do, you guys, I'm not telling, but we should have that microphone monitor or something up there, so that, of course, they don't get their ears here, then, do they? If somebody's talking, they, they, we should have, almost have one up there so they can, you know, have another mic.
Yeah, well, we will have a second one, because this does not have it programmed.
Oh, okay, all right, 'cause then we, then we can talk, if somebody wants to, yeah, talk to the mic, yeah, okay, okay.
Right, right. And it's not so, we can hear it, so it's heard over the radio.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Mayor's concerns, most of mine is then the assisted living and a few other aspects down there, but that's all that covered. That's, it's getting a lot better than what it was. Then, uh, I got one thing here I don't wanna read. Dear Cary and Council, please accept this letter of notice of my resignation from the position of city clerk for the last day of employment be December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. It has been a pleasure working with all of you over the past thirteen years, there have been many highlights serving the community of Goodview. I enjoy growing both professionally and personally with the city of Goodview. I would like to help with the transition of my clerk duties so that the systems continue to function smoothly after my departure. I'm available to help recruit and train my replacement, and I will make certain that all reporting and records are updated before the, my last day of work. Thank you for the opportunity to work for the city of Goodview, Lori Agnew.
Well, we don't have to approve that.
Oh, gosh. Well, good for you, but bad for us. It's an opportunity for someone else. It was a good opportunity for myself and my family when I was chosen by the council thirteen years ago.
Even my right arm, so.
Well, maybe we'll find you a laptop.
We, I mean, we, we talk every day.
Yeah, we do.
We have to find somebody who doesn't mind talking to Cary.
Yeah.
Right.
You keep asking me to start micromanaging this, so.
No, that is one of the things I prove, or appreciate, is not being micromanaged. Um, I know how to do my job.
Well, she does, she's done a very good job since day one being here.
So are you gonna, you should probably start a committee or something, include somebody, or?
Well, we have to, I mean, and I suppose I'll be on that, I'd be on that one. We'd rather get something in paper to start, good, so.
I do have, um, a good start on my job description, I guess, um, some finishing touches would be pay range, and, uh, we can put it on the link of Minnesota Cities. Also, there's a job board there. Um, we put on Indeed, you know, in the local paper, some things, um, and some education requirements, so when I start, I don't think you have that, but you really need to have some basic accounting skills.
So would this be, Lori, um, you know, you're certainly willing to help train somebody in, but even if it goes beyond December thirty-first, I mean, if we have trouble finding somebody?
I told you she had to be around December thirty-first.
Well, we do have some plans, some travel plans, you know, we have a sweet van that Mark's turning into a camper, so, so we do have some plans for a few weeks this winter.
Sure.
And, um.
Don't go to Utah.
Wyoming.
Was it Wyoming?
Wyoming, Wyoming.
Teton National Park, they were in Tondo also.
Really?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so, you know, I guess we'll just have to play it by ear.
So you plan on being around here till December thirty-first of next year?
No. We can try, but.
I gotta keep trying.
Yeah, yeah, let's just see what happens, see how this plays out, um. Another thing hearing I were talking about is some type of an audit, maybe, I don't know, that we have to do a full one, but.
It's protect you, it's protect you and the city, is what it is.
I think we did that, yeah.
No, you did not do that when I started, it was talked about.
We did, we did, when Joe ended up leaving.
Oh, okay, that's what it was, okay, Starland.
Yeah.
Starland, yeah.
We did do it, okay.
Well, not, not when Starland left, Arland found somebody, and then it just never happened, I, I don't know.
We, we did it, we did it when Joe left, just to protect everybody, and then we did it when Dolly left, too.
Yeah, but I don't know that it's a full audit, I think.
No, it wasn't.
They just are looking at, um, certain numbers and.
Trying to figure out what to put in your pocket so you can retire.
Yeah.
No, I, I mean, I hate to see her leave, because she's been fantastic for me, I, I will tell you that, so.
Thank you, yeah. I mean, I'm a little.
Well, there's a lot of, um.
She does it awful lot.
Knowledge in there, that she's the go-to person, so that's hard to replace, you can't find.
But I wasn't there from day one, I mean, I have to learn, and, and it's gonna be done by someone else as well.
Well, see, when I really, when I started on council, they were trying to do it part-time, because they didn't think we needed a full-time clerk. And, but then we're down to five hundred people, too, you know, so now when we're up to over twelve hundred, it has to be. Something else to look forward, or look towards, I should say, is a full-time city administrator here, because it's too much to be putting on one person, so.
Well, that's.
I mean, it doesn't have to be this year, but it's something to look forward in the future.
Dick takes on a lot of that role, and somebody definitely wants to be a quitter as well, and.
Well, I've only got thirty-two years.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, something that should be considered for the future is an administrator.
And they say they call me a Q-tip head, because my, because my hair is white. Good enough.
We ain't going into that one later, so.
Who wants to make a motion?
Avoidance, it's called avoidance, avoidance.
Might not be a motion till December.
Well, you can wait if you want to, but I'm gonna put the ad in the paper.
You can't put the ad in the paper until we accept your resignation, that's kind of, isn't it?
Yeah. So, are you, who is gonna be on the committee, then? You said you wanted to be Cary?
Yeah.
Because I would like to run everything past somebody before I put it in the paper.
What have you done in the past, I mean, you know, this is a pretty kind of important position, so I mean, you need to.
Well, the last two, the last two we had, they just right off the street, I mean.
Yeah.
When, when Joe, when we, well, no, actually, when we, we lost Joe, Starland was working at the school as a secretary or something, and she decided she would come in, so she was learning it, and then when she left, Lori. Well, we actually interviewed Lori, well, I did, because I wasn't here, she thought I didn't like her, so that's when it first started out.
Yeah, yeah.
And she used to babysit my kids, so, I mean, she did, yeah, she did.
So I guess, first of all, we need to, procedurally, how you want this to look, I mean.
I think you gotta get the job description.
Get the job description, do you want, it's a, you know, a lot of times people will have a community member, they'll have somebody from different aspects, you know, it's an important role, that she deals with everybody, so that's, that's, you know, so.
I'm trying to hearing Cary would be really good at this. Me, too.
Nope.
Really?
Did you say Cary? Did you say Cary?
Cary and Terry.
Terry.
I said Cary.
Well, you get your job description, then we can discuss that at some point.
So we have to look at this, that there are just three full months left.
Yep.
And, um, I am gone at the next council meeting, Dick is me. And so if we cancel the last two meetings in November or December, we have three more meetings left with me. So. We need to get traffic.
Yeah, the ad definitely needs to, yeah, get going, let's just get in, so.
Can I get a motion to accept the resignation?
Oh, I'll do it.
Motion is made, do I get a second?
I'll second, she's waiting, she's going, you're going.
Motion is made. Motion is made second to accept Lori's resignation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Council concerns?
Uh, we got a couple of, uh, emails, um, from Mrs. Grayman about trail lighting or dog park, some, some, something, uh, ways to use COVID-type lighting, and that was her thoughts about that. I did send that to all of you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Erin typed up a very nice letter with some things that. Uh, maybe you guys need to see that again, I can look for that and email it again, so. Put it on the next agenda, or do you wanna address it on the next one?
Has that money come through yet?
Uh, we have sixty-seven thousand.
How hard would it be for you to put lighting on your head?
Quite difficult.
Oh, we'd have to have a power company come in and do all that?
Yeah, we, I mean, you have to get fair where you're gonna get power and what are you, what to do. But full then, I mean, it can get very costly in the real world, or.
You got, yeah, you have to, we pay so much per light on a monthly basis, just like the streetlights.
Yeah.
We put, we pay for each streetlight round every month.
And then the other one was for the Franklin Memorial, if they have a, a bench for the member of the Franklin, if it's at the Historical Society or the, um, outside the post office, or whatever.
You want the post office, the Lyons Building, or Historical Society is what I thought, right?
Yeah, yeah, that was mentioned, and I think Rosie Park also, or you wasn't involved?
Well, the thing about it is you can put it on the trail by the Historical Society.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it has to be a spot, because there's no place to sit out in that area. I mean, that's what I was thinking, but post office, there just isn't any place where you put it there, you know, Lyons Building, we have, it'd be out front, there's already two out there. But I thought over here, by the Historical Society, you could put it by the trail, it'd still be by the Historical Society, so that's my thought, so.
And then do they pay for that as far as the bench, and do we look at the design at all, or does it?
We never have, I mean.
Yeah.
Like Marcy put one up there by the trail by where she used to live there, I mean, that, that, they all look good. So I don't have an issue with it at all, but, I mean, she was, I was thinking Rosie Park, but, like, there's a lot of them out there, but there is none over here. That'd be, that'd be my thought, so.
And that was one of the mentioned sites by the historical site, because she was so involved.
Yeah. Did I forward that to all of you, or, yeah, okay, I remember.
Yeah, see, it's, it's Carleen's, I'm doing the estate, it's Carleen has a brother and a sister.
Oh.
And his sister is Kathy Munfred, and then her, her brother is Chuck Wolverine, remember that name, Wolverine?
Yeah.
Um, and he lives, she lives, he lives up in, uh, St. Paul, I can't remember where his sister lives, but, really good people, just top-of-line people.
Need a motion for that?
Uh, no, as long as the consensus is we're all in his favor, I mean, that's just, we never have before, so.
But the placement of it, I mean, who is involved with that to help Steve?
We just tell him about where we want it, and then he'll figure it out, so.
And where the, and you know.
Yeah.
And also the, um, the other one, I don't know, that's going in the jungle, those Historical Societies, uh.
Yeah, veterans, veterans, yeah.
Well, that'd be, yeah, this would fit in there, too, you know.
So am I talking to her and telling her that would be the best bet?
Yep.
Giving her Steve's number, or?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other council concerns?
I had one that was brought up, and it was about, um, the horseshoes and.
Central Park.
Yeah. Is there a reason they need to stay? Or, I mean, the grass is tall around them, and somebody said, you know, if the kids are running through there, they are a health hazard, because if they trip and fall on them, they're not really protected, they're not really used much, is there? I mean, I can't remember one.
It's been a long time since they've been used as.
How are you using? Oh, that horseshoe that you got there, yeah.
Yeah, but.
I remember it.
There hasn't been for a long time, so it's either, I think we should maintain them, or else we should pull them out. I mean, I know we have to leave that as a park for a carrot, because that was designated, but.
No, I don't have an issue, I mean, they aren't, they, I've never seen my honest sleep, really.
No, I mean, I haven't.
They ever wanted to put it back, you could put them in down here, you know, but.
We have some in those.
Huh?
Yeah.
Have some.
Well, then I could say take those out, though. Yeah.
So that part was designated?
That's a part. David, Davis, Davis Edition, isn't it, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, David, yeah, yeah.
That's the stay apart.
They have to stay apart.
It was given with that restriction. Yeah, they, they even kinda got asked one time about.
Because we had the, the pump house being on it. We got the water pump house on it, and we got grief about that, so.
You know, I'm in good for it, I honestly don't know.
No, and that, you, you gotta ask, I mean, if you don't ask, you'll never know, man.
Steve, is there any dirt around, because those are probably, those sand pits will have to probably be leveled. Steve, is there any dirt around, because those are probably, those sand pits will have to probably be leveled off a little bit.
I don't think there's much sand there.
Yeah, very little, it's all grown over, but.
Yeah, we'll find some.
Okay, it'll be making easier for mowing for you.
For sure, yeah, we're happy to pull off.
Any other council concerns? I got a motion to pay the bills.
I move.
You second.
You gonna teach your replacement how to do this, Lori?
You bet.
I'll second. Motion made second to pay the bills, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. We're now going to go into a closed meeting for employee issue.
I, I think we, I think I want the police chief to stay in here.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yep. Cary, if you want to go, you can.
No, I can't sign that, so.
It won't take. Yep, have a nice night, yep.
Sounds good.